...the order, I'm gonna ask everyone to shut your cell phones off and we'll stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I guess we'll start with approval of agenda and might be some additional items.
Yeah, a couple of additional items, if we could put under twenty, a discussion on the Cardinal Care proposal that we just received right before the board meeting tonight, so I know there's gonna be some questions and discussion on that. So, under twenty, under other twenty-eight, discussion on Cardinal Care. And then twenty-B, we're gonna ask the board for permission to post for a silent bid for a couple of pianos that we have in the district that we would like to get rid of.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. I got, I'm sorry, Justin, I got one more question.
Okay.
You can talk, we have a CD contract against.
Oh, okay. Alright, motion by Justin.
Second.
Second by Pat, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Public input. Nikki Bergen, school topics.
Kids are like a mirror. Kids are like a mirror, what they see and hear, they do, so let's be a good reflection for them. I am standing here tonight, not only as a concerned staff member, but also as a concerned parent and community member. Our number-one priority should and always be our children, we are here for them. If they weren't taught on our priority list, why would we be here? Their education, their minds, we should be helping mold them into the responsible, respectful young men and women we want, representing not only at LO, but also out in this world. What lessons are we teaching our kids and what are they learning out of the situation? You may not think they know what's going on internally, but they see things, they hear things, they are not oblivious to the fact. We teach our children what's right is right, and we praise them, what's wrong is wrong, you suffer consequences. We make sure they know what they did was wrong, and then we help fix it. As a community member, it saddens me that the only talk heard while walking down the street is about our school and the shambles that it is in. We have a great community with great community members. With so many positive things happening, it would be a shame to see the positives start to disappear. What is happening now does not only affect the school, our students and staff, it affects our community and businesses. As a staff member, I am proud of our kids, I am proud of this school. To say this is the worst school in the area is hurtful and disrespectful to all forty-plus staff members that are here working for and with our kids at LO. We have an amazing staff, and I'm sorry if you do not see this. One person is not to blame for all this, we could sit around and point fingers all we want, we could play the blame game all we want, but again, we will wind up in the vicious cycle we are in right now. As a school, as a community, we have no other way to go but up. We need to come together as one, not broken up into segregated groups. Let's rise above this, take care of what needs to be done, and keep pushing forward. These kids need not only us, but they need the best of us, thank you.
Thanks for that, thank you. I guess that's all for public comment, so we'll move on to recognition. Then we move on to approval of minutes, we have five meetings, July sixteenth, July twenty-fifth, special meeting, August first, special meeting, August eighth, special meeting, and then August fourteenth, special meeting. Is there any discussion about those five meetings? Everything look okay? If so, we're looking for approval of those minutes. Thank you so.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the last five board meetings.
Motion by Teresa.
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carry. Then we move on to Treasuries Report, we'll start with the thirteenth month bank reconciliation.
Alright, so here's the thirteenth month bank rec. Basically, I guess we have twelve months till our fiscal year, but our thirteenth month is when we can review the required journal entries from the state that we have to make our adjustments for. It's some community ed portions paying the district, the district paying community ed, community ed, current care, paying food service, types of things like that. Transportation gets allocated to all parties that use transportation, type of thing like that. So those are what we call our thirteen-month allocations, so the totals are the same as the end of new June, but this just ties it out so that we can go into the new fiscal year. Like I said, interest is another one, some lessons, work comp, and aid receipt adjustment, community ed, transportation, kindergarten, pre-K milk, ECFD, warrant salary that's donated to scholarship, clearing out Fund VII or debt service fund, and ECSE tuition, and that again, the food service for kindergarten camp. So it just basically, it just ties out those allocations. Like I said, moving into the the July month-end bank rec. Let's see, the totals here, for the end of the month, you'll see that the pool, which is a general fund, pardon, general fund, but we're allocating it out separately here, and the activity count are included on here now. And so, those totals, investment savings for education, anticipation and scholarship, so our total cash of that investment is two million, seven hundred, seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Have any questions on those? And then, I just do a quick, to, to, time constraints, a tip, a quick report from our smart system that first goes over revenues you have fiscal year eighteen, fiscal year nineteen in the middle, and then on the right, fiscal year twenty, which we're just starting then. The first few pages were revenues. And then, goes into food service, community service, scholarship, the pool, our local trusts, our whole debt service, and then I guess it's not showing up, is it, it's an activity comp, that's a part of this report? Or there was just no revenue that could be too? Oh, there it is, twenty lots in activity, sorry, I was looking for thirty. And then, go into the expenses, it goes through the salaries, wages, benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital expenditures, there's some miscellaneous others, again, then through the rest of the funds. Through each of those categories, leaving us to our report totals at the end. If I have any questions on those, and these are all on the website as well, so we should be taking a peek at them, any questions if you haven't?
I have a general question, not anything specific here, but it's something that we think of as we move ahead with, our change in superintendents. And my question is to the whole board and to you as well, Will. The planning system that we have for improvements here, that Jerry was working on, do we want to continue to follow that, or, and if so, is there a way to transfer that information and that, as to where we're at in that process, so we don't have to start this all over again? Are we interested in that?
Because while we have the planning document.
Yeah, all the documents that we've been going through on a monthly basis with Jerry that show when things are gonna get, you know, bathrooms, parking lots.
Right.
All of these things that we were moving forward on. I guess I'm just wondering how we're gonna handle that, because Ray comes in. I don't necessarily think we're gonna come up with an answer tonight, but it's something I've been wondering, how are we gonna handle this so that we don't have to start this all over again?
My understanding is that spreadsheet belongs to the district, so wherever Jerry left off at, wherever we were a month ago, that's where Ray will pick up. That's my understanding, is that, that way you would see?
Yeah, what I would recommend is probably have, I tried to reach out to Jerry last week, didn't get a hold of him, and I didn't leave a message, so I don't know if he recognized my number or not, but it may be a good idea to have Ray reach out to Jerry and just say, any of those documents that you had been working with the board on, you know, Jerry's not an addictive person, so I can't imagine that he would be unwilling to share what he has so that you can keep moving forward with it, so. But, and I know Ray knows Jerry, so might be a good connection there to reach out. And I would be happy to follow up with him as well, I know Jerry extremely well.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll go back to getting out.
Got any other questions?
Treasuries reports or the financial reports?
I guess, the way it's on here, we'll approve the bank reconciliation separate from the approval of bills, or should we do it all together? Probably do the reconciliation and approve the bills. So if you're done with?
Yeah, we're done with that portion.
Okay, so any, any discussion on the bank reconciliation? So we'll be looking for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasuries reports for month thirteen and then July twenty-nineteen bank reconciliation.
Motion by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Tim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we move on to approval of bills.
Alright, fourteen pages bills here. If you have any questions, or if you popped up in your review of them. Starting to get some of the new year purchases in here. You'll see, and then going through this next couple of months, all the supplies and stuff like that, the teachers are ordering. Items. If anyone have any questions?
I, I had a couple, I gotta find them, but Glass Unlock, what is, I can't find it on there, it's doors back.
What was it?
What's that?
So that was Glass Unlock?
Yeah, they had a bill on there for nine thousand for bathroom doors, so.
That's bathroom doors.
Yeah, but which doors are that, that's an awful lot for a couple bathroom doors, how many doors is that?
If I remember right from the invoice, it was just the two bathroom doors. But the locking mechanism and the handicap buttons were included on that invoice too.
Yeah, the handicap buttons, yeah.
Maybe that's what they cost, it just seemed like a lot, is all that to me, but it's, you know, we never looked at any bids or anything on that, it just happened.
I didn't see any.
There is ninety, it's ninety-eight hundred dollars, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, one. And then the other one was for the remodel of the bathrooms.
Picker?
Yeah, I kinda lost my bearing on what page it's all this stuff, oh, here it is. Picker Goldman Plumbing, thirteen, two fifty. So, how much is that total? Do you have any idea now what that total is for them, for the remodel?
Oh, I've seen it as a thirty, that, that's thirty thousand, that nine thousand, but I didn't see anything prior.
Prior, is that the full amount, do you think there's?
I would think that would be close to it, there.
If I remember it from the invoice, that's the final, final bill from them. We had paid six or seven hundred dollars back in June or July, and then this would be the final, because if I remember the invoice correctly, this is the final bill to finish out the bathrooms, from them.
They had ordered the stalls, or if the stalls were ordered to someplace else. I remember we used stalls.
I don't think we approved any bids. And it might, it might have been mentioned that there was a bid for that, but there was nothing discussed or approved of, it just happened.
Well, it was in, it was in the long-range plan.
Yeah, it was in the long-range plan.
That's where I think I saw it.
Right, it was there, we looked at it.
The picker has bids to replace four toilets, four faucets and sinks, staffs and supplies, three urinals, and the three partitions in the women's bathroom, labor and materials to complete. Baby changing station, labor and material to complete. That's the picker bill.
Well, the work needed to be done, so.
Yes, we can.
And the southern lock is solid oak doors and steel frames and two handicap operators.
The other, the other one is in the pool dehumidification for winona for sixty-three hundred and sixty-seven. What was that for?
Just says pool dehumidification, that operator.
Then a form of the fans on the rooftop, motors?
That replaced.
I think, I think, like, four thousand something odd dollars is for board.
Really?
That ain't that old, did it ever say?
Three, two, three years old?
I think, well, that's about, five, probably. That was on my head, I guess.
I have a quick question about Minnesota State High School, we, uh, notice, we got charged for NMBs, do you have to be charged for any of these? If, just like, let's say, for example, the girls saw, if we don't have anyone who will, do we get charged that?
Yeah, it's a little part of the co-op, I know.
That's right, that's what's going to be.
Yeah.
Motion by Angie.
Seconded.
Second by Pat. Any?
I can ask Teresa.
Teresa, either?
I can either.
Maybe one, you can have it for two.
I heard Paul, but I thought I heard Pat, but it don't matter. Motion by Angie, second by Teresa, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we'll move on to personnel. First off, Dan Lowell resignation from Transportation Director.
Yeah, I mean, this happened before I got here, so just a recommendation to approve his resignation.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Dan Lowell from Transportation Director.
Motion by Justin. Second by Angie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we have the resignation from Ryan Mornberg.
Yeah, but did receive a notice from Ryan that he intended to resign as varsity girls' basketball coach, so recommendation to approve his resignation.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation for Ryan Mornberg as varsity girls' basketball coach.
Motion by Cassidy.
Second.
Second by Tim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we got approval of superintendent contract with Ray Arsenal.
Yeah, so we, as you know, we interviewed last week for the interim superintendent position, I called Ray the next day at the direction of the board, and Ray accepted your offer for interim superintendent for the year. So Ray will take over right after this meeting, and he will be your superintendent moving forward, so recommendation to approve the contract for Ray Arsenal.
Could, do you have the terms of the contract, I think it's, is it seventy thousand?
That one right up there on the board, seventy thousand, I think it was, consultants, seventy, seven thousand, thirty-five. September fifteenth, fifteen, in the days. Also, for dental insurance, and health insurance. August twenty-first, to the, to the, for the, last year.
And Ray met with me this afternoon and went through it all, he agreed everything that's in this contract, so.
Okay, any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ray Arsenal as our superintendent.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Teresa, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we have approval of John Stockdale as Transportation Director.
Yeah, as you know, we talked about in one of our previous meetings about some of the various openings that we have in the district, we talked about the sharing agreement with Southland, we talked about a couple teaching openings, I know Aaron and Mel both posted a couple of those positions. We talked about bundling a lot of those positions, like AD, Transportation Director, Community Ed, things like that. John came into my office last week and talked to me about the transportation, he's one of the drivers in the district, and he was very, very concerned about the fact that all of these requests are starting to come in and things need to get lined up for extracurricular, you're planning bus routes and everything for that school's about to start here very, very soon, and we have nobody in place right now to do transportation. So John said, I am willing to step in and do this if the board will approve me, and he said, because we can't wait around, he said, we really need to get going with this stuff. He called Cheryl Noble and was picking Cheryl's brain on it and said, Cheryl, do you think I've got the skill set? Can I handle this? And Cheryl said, yeah, I think you can do this, and some of these duties, obviously, once we get the office staff set in place, I think there's some things that could probably be delegated or shared or different duties split up, but John was willing to step in and take that leadership role and really get moving with it, so. As I thought about that more, I thought that was a really good idea, because quite honestly, we just can't wait around. If we have, you know, kids that we need to get planning for, this needed to get done. So I would recommend that you approve John Stockdale as the Transportation Director this year.
Motion by Angie. I think, Tim, a second by Tim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we got acceptance of donation and grants, so you want to talk about them, Steve?
Yeah, I think you can, I'm not as familiar with these, being a short timer, but if you, I think you could just go right down the list and approve each one of these.
Okay, should we do them individually or altogether?
I think you could do them all together, because they're listed in the agenda, so it's pretty clear they can go that way in the minutes, you can do it all in one motion.
Okay, so we have a three thousand dollar donation from the Leroy Foundation towards a new piano. We have a two thousand dollar donation from the Leroy Community Foundation for the National FFA trip, and a one thousand dollar donation from the Ostrand Alliance for the elementary snack cart. Motion by Angie.
Second.
Second by Justin, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we have review and acceptance of melt bids.
We have one bid from Dean Foods, basically starting at this one percent line. Here, one percent is point one nine four, skim is point one eight four nine, chocolate skim is point two zero eight three, and lactose free is point six eight four.
How is that compared to the other?
Um, when I was, we had over the minutes, it was just a little bit up. I could think the chocolate was point two zero three, so that's point two zero eight three, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the, that's actually not bad.
Motion by Pat. Second by Tim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we got Minnesota Department of Education External User Access Recertification System.
Yeah, and this is the same thing that you did a couple weeks ago for me, so this is just giving Ray permission to go on the MDE website and submit the reports, everything that he needs to do, so. So you just need to have board approval, so they can send in the minutes and show that.
Chairman and Board, can I be on for two districts, because I'm still that person that wrote, and I've never done two districts.
You can, so MDE can put you in the system, all they have to do is add your new district to it, because I've done it before.
Thank you, so.
I'll make a motion to make Ray Arsenal. Insecu, identified official authority.
And this has to be a roll call.
Okay, motion by Tim, and second by Pat, any discussion? Okay, I'll start with Teresa.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Pat? Justin?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Angie? And I vote yes. Motion carry. Uh, next, let's see, we got a resolution to enter into joint purchasing agreement with Anoka Hennepin.
Yeah, so looking for board approval here, this is for your food service to belong to the co-op to get a discounted price, so I would make a recommendation that the board accepts this.
Is the fee, it's four hundred and fifty a year to belong to this?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to enter into joint purchasing agreement with Anoka Hennepin School District.
Motion by Justin, second by Angie, any discussion? Is that roll call too? Okay, any, no discussion? Okay, Teresa?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes, Cassidy.
Angie? And I vote yes too. Motion carry. Okay, next we have approval of second reading of Activity Handbook. And we approved it last month. Now we, uh, approved it last month and then there was some change made or not, or?
Under number four here, you guys have talked about having athletic activities board, because that's how it's referred to throughout the rest of documents, so we just need that update to that. I had on, um, page six, uh, name changes. We don't have an athletic director. Should it be changed just to athletic director? Under protocols for discuss, um, discussing concerns. Right there.
That'd probably be the easiest way to do it.
Yep, I have the same thing on seven for procedures or any questions. Um, remove the name and just change it to athletic director. Page six, number three. Um, we have two and three under protocol and then under procedure on page seven, I had just the name change. With any questions, yes. I just wanted to use to say activities director.
Maybe this would be a good place to ask this question, but where, where are we at about athletic director issue? Yeah.
Um, we're interviewed person today that is interested, um, got maybe another interview or something. Hopefully by then we should have, um, hoping if we're making possible that while we're just, so.
So how are we going to handle that if we don't have another board meeting before it starts?
Just do a special one?
Well, having an athletic director in place is a requirement.
No, but I mean, we have to hire them. I mean, we have to hire these people, or we?
So there's a couple of different ways you can handle that. One is you could have Ray send an update out to the board as to who those, you know, people are. This is going to be our recommendation. It's not uncommon to have those people start, you know, please give me immediate feedback if this is going to be an issue in a board meeting, because you don't want somebody to start and then have it voted down by the board. Or if, if the board wishes, you could call a special meeting, um, but if there, if it's not going to be a hot topic, I, it's not uncommon to, you know, replace positions before the board meeting. But I, what I've always done is I've always updated the board and say, let me know immediately if this is an issue, because if it is, I'll call a special meeting, so it's really up to the board.
Ray, what's your take on that?
Well, what I've done is not necessarily athletic director, but if I'm going to hire someone prior to the board being involved, I'll tell that candidate, I'm offering you the position pending board approval at the next meeting. That's the way I handle it. Does that sound consistent to you?
Absolutely.
And I want to be involved in the interview process also.
You always make it clear to the candidate that it does take work.
Right. So I don't think we need a special meeting at the board meeting.
Right.
I just done it last week at Butterfield.
We will meet on the Friday.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yes, I'll be involved in the interview and contact the board. Okay, uh, going back to the activity handbook, uh, Teresa pointed out a couple of changes, names changed to athletic director. Or activities director, or either one, I guess. Any other, anything else, anybody got? So I suppose we'll have to do a third reading on that now, or just table it?
I was going to say approve it with the changes. Nobody else had anything.
Okay. Are you going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading, or to approve the reading of the handbook with the changes being made and stuff tonight.
Motion by Teresa, second by Angie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we have approval of elementary student handbook. I think the one thing I noticed was we should change the superintendent that's listed as Jerry Regatar. We might as well change it to, to Ray, so I'm getting that correct.
And it's, um, the change, the noted changes that was up on the board, um, I don't know if you're any more, any more to, on this?
I don't know, I, did you look through this here and make sure all these names were correct?
Yeah, she had done, she did it before she left, but she came back and said to the, you know. I don't know, I'm curious though. There's a couple, there's a couple, maybe a pair out there that would resign, because she may work the month.
Right. I suppose we could approve it with necessary name changes to make sure the name changes are correct, or do you want to do a second reading?
No, I think you, because it's been approved in the past, I think you can approve that with, uh, um, approve it and have her make those changes to update it.
Okay.
It'd be nice to have that in place.
I'll make a motion to approve the elementary student handbook with the name changes.
Motion by Tim.
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next we move on to approval of faculty handbook.
I didn't see any changes, so I'll make the motion to approve the faculty handbook.
Motion by Teresa. Second by Tim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Um, now we'll move on to, uh, principal report, Aaron.
Um, I'll be working with Ray this week to get all of our staffing needs set, um, if, if at all possible, those I'll be, I'll be by him. Uh, talked to Steve a little bit this week also, also most thankful both those are aware of what we're working on, but Ray will communicate that out when we finish with those. Um, test scores are not, not out yet through MDE, so I'll report on those, um, when they come out. I'll have the new staff members. I'll try to get them to September or October's board meetings, so you guys can meet the new staff members. Um, just wanted to give a little shout out to our elementary staff that came in this, today, um, technically a day off still. They had a presentation and workshop by Mary Howard. She works for the Bureau of Education Research. And they worked on reading strategies of interventions to accelerate literacy success, so. They had a full day workshop today on a, on still their day off, so I thought that was, the entire staff in the elementary was there, so. Um, kudos to Jill Salto for setting that up through our T1 program and, and our money, so. Um, we're going to jump on things. The teachers are starting to report back, so I'll have a lot more for you guys next month after we get up and running and things are filled and programs are in place and. We've got all the great things we've got going on, because we have a lot, so. That's all I got.
Um, I guess we'll move on to superintendent or student?
Okay, yeah, a few things for me. Um, wanted to give you an update on the career navigator position, and I'm sure you've heard a little bit about this throughout the year, but the SNEC group has decided to hire a person to help students with their, um, career pathways, and this is, um, really kind of a new initiative. Um, some of your larger schools in Minnesota in the metro are doing a lot of this type of work. Um, you've probably heard Jerry talk about it a little bit in the past, probably Aaron as well, but, um, there's a, a big push by employers right now to start to get kids um, steered in the right direction to get them on a career path. There's a huge workforce shortage right now and these companies are starving to get kids to come in, and these are really decent paying jobs. Um, so I give the SNEC group a lot of credit because they asked me to attend one of the SNEC meetings over in Austin. It was quite a while ago now. And we started these discussions and, and the SNEC group was thinking about doing something. At the same time, we have been working on this initiative at the co-op. We were trying to get some state funding to help support this. Um, so we started to work together on this. So I'm happy to let the board know that we have hired Heather Shutey, who used to run the transition program over in Adams, so it's exactly what the type of work that she did. She took a couple of years leave of absence to be a stay-at-home mom for a while. Um, when we heard about this, we encouraged her to apply because we knew that she would be fantastic. We had quite a few applicants and, and high-quality applicants. It was, um, quite honestly, it was tough to narrow down the field and I wasn't part of the hiring process. I had a couple of my staff members along with some of the principals in the SNEC group. Um, but she's already been underway. We've, um, we've got her, I'll ask my board to approve her contract next week, um, which won't be an issue. I've already got the thumbs up from them. And she's going to begin work this fall in your schools. We've also have been working at the co-op on a software program that will come into your buildings and there will be trainings and stuff for your principals and teachers and stuff like that, but the software program, it allows businesses to go into this program and plug in all of their information and exactly what they're looking for. So they may have internship opportunities within their company, so it could be, it could be a small company in town. It could be Mayo, it could be Hormel, it could be, um, a, a small company right here in Leroy that wants to get involved in this, and maybe they're looking for some interns or be willing to take some of these kids on, into career paths. Um, so it's very, very exciting work. Um, each of the SNEC schools that have, um, agreed to do this have earmarked a, a, under ten thousand dollars to do this. I just found out today that, um, Grand Meadow was approved for some Title IV funding, which I know Mel and Aaron have been working on applying for as well. Um, so hopefully in the near future, you'll get that money, and that's about ten thousand dollars that has to go to a new initiative, so assuming that you get approved for that, your costs are covered. The other thing is, is we were awarded, um, significant dollars for career and tech education funding from the co-op that we got through the legislature and we're hoping, we don't know how we're going to be allowed to spend that money. We just got the grant application last Friday. So we're starting to fill that paperwork out, but I'm very optimistic that we will be able to use a lot of that funding to help with this type of work, so maybe another way. So real, realistically, you could end up with a career navigator for, um, next to nothing. Um, you know, I, I think that, you know, as I've talked to the superintendents, I think there needs to be a little bit of skin in the game for any district that's in it, but if we can keep those costs extremely minimal and you're getting the type of service, um, this is going to be a great thing for Leroy Ostrander kids and, and other kids in SNEC districts that are participating in this, so. Um, so the funding's all lined up for right now. We, we think. Ongoing funding, businesses are chomping at the bit to get into this program. Um, a couple of my staff members, Amy Grover and Sarah Ness, have been working with a software developer on that software that I mentioned. Your teachers will have curriculum that will be tied into this software, um, so they're going to be able to go on and take curriculum. They can line up guest speakers. Um, it's going to give kids the opportunity to go on to this platform and take a look at what opportunities are out there, so they can actually go through and, I want to be a welder, what opportunities are there for me out there to get into an internship in welding? Um, and I'm just using that as a hypothetical example. Um, and then also along with this software is, um, the, the businesses are able to control it this way, and that's what they like the most about it, because some of these companies get bombarded with, you know, schools and we have all these kids that we want to put into internships, and so now they can actually post on this platform. I've got two internship opportunities available. When they're filled, they come off, so as you're on this, it's, it's very simple to use, so. Uh, much more to come on, on the software piece of it, but, um, I'm really excited for, for the SNEC group, because we, we offered this to other groups in the southeast as well. A couple of them weren't quite ready to get on board, but your leadership in the SNEC group with the superintendents and principals, they really drove this and, and they came to us and said, can you, can you work on this? But, um, I think that's going to be a really great thing for, for Leroy. So, uh, much more to come on that. I, I also think with the money from the state, we're going to be able to hire other positions to help support this work. I think one person's going to be stretched a little bit thin, especially early on. Um, but Heather's a go-getter and she's worked with us before and, and she will go out and she's very, very well-connected to, to the area and she's, she worked for the SNEC group before, so I think it'll be a good thing. Um, next thing that I had is just a, and I'm sure you've gotten plenty of legislative updates. I didn't know how much you've gotten, so I'm not going to spend much time on this, but I just, in case you haven't seen it, I put a printed summary in front of you from MSBA. Um, just a couple of big things to note, as you, I'm sure you know, you ended up getting a two and two percent in, in, as a funding year. Um, I, I thought this was overall a pretty good session for schools. It's still not where we need to be. Um, but the other thing that, that, that happened this time was there was a little bit of, um, actually a fairly significant investment in the cross-substitute when it comes to special education. So as you know, the, I mean, the local or state and federal government are just not funding special ed the way that they should be, and so this was a pretty large investment, and I know there's been um, superintendents, board members, lobbyists, they've really been pushing hard for this for a number of years, and finally, we, we made a little progress there. Um, the other thing that I'd like to see where there were not a lot of unfunded mandates this time, that gets to be overwhelming for school districts, and when I was in St. Louis County, I actually, we did a spreadsheet for our board to show you every single report that is due throughout the year that we have to do. And it's unbelievable, the amount of work. So if you wonder, if you ever wonder why we have so much office staff or so much help, that's exactly why, because there is just a lot of stuff that ties your hands as school districts. So we're always looking for things that don't take away the local control, um, and there wasn't a lot of that this time, so that was good news. Um, the other thing that I always like to see is there was just more funding and it's not the grants. The competitive grants can become very competitive. Um, some of your districts with, you know, larger number of students, they've got more staff available to write those grants. Your small districts like, uh, Leroy Ostrander, we don't necessarily have the time and ability to do all those things, so. It can be very frustrating when you have to write these grants and then you're not even guaranteed you're going to get it in return, so. Um, so that was good. I, I think the big things to look for in the future, there were a lot of things that got shot down this time and, and in your packet here, there's a list of things to watch for. When you do get the opportunity to speak to your representatives, your legislators and senators for the state, um, they really do listen to you, and they tell us that as superintendents as well, it's important to communicate with them, so if you ever have the opportunity, but I always look out for things that take away your local control, so when you see things, and these tend to be lobbyist groups, that something really bad happened in a community and now we want to get legislation passed, so the whole state has to do something. Those spur-of-the-moment reactions, in my opinion, are, are never good ideas. Um, there may be exceptions, but, but typically they're not, so. Um, when you look for like the civics course, you've seen legislation on that where you're going to be required to take a civics course, course in order to graduate in eleventh or twelfth grade. Well, that takes away your local control, and when you're building a master schedule in a small school district, um, it really ties your hands, and, and these schedules in small districts are very, very hard to do, even, even if it is one or two sections, so. The more of those mandates that you have, the more limited you are on your local control, so those are always the things that I always look for. Don't force us to do this. If, if we want to do senior project in Leroy Ostrander, we'll do senior project in Leroy Ostrander. Don't tell us that we have to do it or that we can't do it, so. Um, just some examples, so. I just thought it was good information. MSBA does a nice job with communications, and I'm sure you get those, so I just wanted to touch base on those. And then the other thing that I had was, um, you have been notified as a board for the teacher's desire to start negotiations. Um, I have been in contact with Tiffany, Tim. Um, they are very eager to get started. Um, I've also talked to Ray about this. Ray actually got to meet Tiffany in the office today, so those two have already had a very brief conversation and they agreed that they would get going relatively soon, so your committee here, um, can work through Ray, but Ray's willing to take that on and do the negotiations and, um, but it is something you should probably get going on, yes. Yeah, so Ray will be doing kind of double duty there for a little while and, um, but I just wanted to let you know, I told Tiffany that I would mention it tonight because she's, she's eager to get going and, um, just wanted to make you aware of that. And then the last thing I had is I just wanted to thank the board for the opportunity. I would have never guessed in a million years that this was going to happen, but I'm, I'm glad that I was able to step in and help out, even though it was only a few weeks, and I did tell Steve, I'll prorate the, since I'm not here the entire month, if Ray is going to take over, I will be more than accessible with Ray. He's already been to my office once. He knows where I am. So if there's questions or anything that I can help with, I'm more than willing to help out, um, in any way that I can, so. Um, I was very encouraged the other night with, uh, um, with the way that the board handled the interviews. I thought it was really. handled the interviews, I thought it was really refreshing, and I don't know everything that's happened here, and I'm not gonna pretend to know, and I don't need to know everything, but I just thought it was really refreshing to see the board come together, it was unanimous, there was, you know, you really got on the same page. So, I hope you can continue that in the future. Ray's a really positive guy, I've really enjoyed getting to know him the last week or so. We've been talking quite a bit, and we've been in touch, and I think Ray is the right guy to lead this district, so I hope you let him do that. You know, one of the things that we tell kids and parents when there's conflict or there's things going on, is we have very short memories in education. We don't hold grudges when it comes to kids. Kids can do the stupidest thing in the world, we might suspend them for three days, but when they come back, we don't hate that kid. And that's just how we're wired in education. So, I hope you as a board, community, teachers, I hope that you can start to come together. Put that stuff behind you would be my best advice, and I don't wanna sound like I'm on a soapbox, and I'm not here to point fingers at anybody, but I just felt like it needs to be said. I thought the opening tonight of the board meeting was very positive and was a good message, and but let bygones be bygones, whatever happened, has happened, and I hope that you can start to build that trust and get back on the same page, because I lived in this town for nine years, my daughter had an incredible experience in this school, and I really, truly, honestly wanna see you get back on track. So, that's all I have, unless there's any questions for me.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Before you adjourn, I'd like to thank the board and the students for the opportunity to be here to the district. I hopefully plan on being here long-term, so thank you again for giving that opportunity.
If you want, Ray, you can stand up and talk a little, let's, go ahead. And I don't know if you know it, but we livestream our meetings, and it's recorded, so are you, is it actually working tonight?
I'm just recording and posting it later.
Okay.
So I get that figured out.
Well, I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to be your new superintendent. I'm looking very much forward to it. I really am not gonna get involved in who did what, where, and when, 'cause I don't care. My job is to be here for your kids, your students, put things back together and move forward. Kinda tired tonight, though, I spent about half an hour over at football practice, and I'm getting a little old for watching that, but anyway, I wanna thank you, and also, as I said, I'd like to be here long-term, so we can move forward. Thanks very much for giving me the opportunity, and I'll be in tomorrow to give you my social security card, driver's license, and everything else we need to do the criminal background check now. Thank you, board, thank you, Steve, thank you, staff and public.
Thank you, Ray.
Is that all, Steve, then?
Yeah, that's all for mine.
Okay, if, any questions for Steve or Ray? If not, I guess we'll move on to board reports, and if anyone would like to talk about anything? I guess I'd just, again, like to thank you, Steve, for stepping in and helping us out, and I think it really served to bring stability and ease things, and so with that, is there Okay, then I guess we'll move on to Cardinal Care, and I guess Diane, you'll stand up and speak, right?
As most of you know, for the last three years, we've expanded our Cardinal Care to, so the kids that are enrolled in preschool and early learners can go to Cardinal Care in between, so that they don't have to go to a different daycare in a different town, and then maybe go to preschool in a different town. So, it's worked out really well, I think it's been a very successful thing. Well, this year, I was certified at the Cardinal Kids Program, and I noticed on my certification that we can take kids at 33 months. And I'm thinking, hmm, maybe we should offer that to the community, so that we can have some of those kids that are not quite ready to enroll in preschool could start this fall at 33 months and then throughout the year. I should include Bev Ferguson is our licensed preschool teacher that works in Head Start, and she's the person that does the Cardinal Care, so she's a big part of making this happen. Anyway, we would be able to have kids come in at 33 months throughout the year, and in the Head Start program, they can start when they turn three any time during the year. But a lot of kids don't qualify for Head Start, so this would allow kids of all, you know, price or income levels to enter. We would be restricted by 20 total for the year, I mean, for that time period. So, if we have 14 enrolled in Cardinal Care, we don't wanna be able to have six 33-month-olds or if we have, but typically, I think we'll sell that room for four to six kids. Yeah. We don't, I think right now, we have about 11 kids enrolled in Cardinal Care, but we don't have all of our registrations for preschool and early learners, so we may get a few more, and they're kinda trickling in as they go. So, the only, the good thing about it again is hopefully the kids will come in at 33 months, and they'll participate in Bev's program and see the strength of our program, because Cardinal Care is more than just daycare, it is a comprehensive program, she does a curriculum, so they're not just coming to daycare, and we don't want it to be a daycare, we want it to be an extension of the preschool. The only stipulation is that once those three-year-olds, or once they turn three and they're eligible for early learners, they do have to enroll in early learners. We don't want this to take the place of it. So, if they might, this first year, they might be in Cardinal Care for six months, but then come that fall, if they wanna be in Cardinal Care, they have to enroll in early learners or the preschool program. We don't wanna have it be a substitute for preschool or early learners. So, if that makes sense. The only, we already have two staff in place to take care of those 20 kids, so there's not an additional staff expense at that level. The only thing that we've requested is that, because we're more likely to get kids that are toddlers that need to have their pants changed, is that we'd like to have a toddler changing station. And the difference between that and getting on the floor and changing them on a mat is that the kids step up on a step, I have a picture handed there, they can step up and get themselves up there, rather than staff having to lift them, and it's just less likely to injure any staff or kids, for that matter. And that costs between $5.60 and $1,000. And the other thing, when Jerry was here, and we've talked about this before, it would be really beneficial for us to have a bathroom in our room, and we've looked at a space that we could do it, so eventually, it would be nice, because now we have to walk kids down to the small gym bathroom in order to take them to the bathroom, and technically, we're not supposed to be alone with one child in the bathroom, we're supposed to have a second adult with us, or at the very least, a second child. And it just would be so much better if we could have a bathroom down in that room somewhere. So, I hope that that will stay on your long-term plan. Any questions about this?
When it comes to enrolling, are you guys gonna look at those that are enrolled in three-year-old preschool get first options than those that are not?
Yes, in anticipation of that, I sent out a note last week to all the, or Diane sent it out for me, for all the parents of kids three and four-year-olds that were eligible to start preschool and early learners, told them about Cardinal Care, because I don't think we promote it enough, that that's an option for parents. So, we sent that out to them, I've already heard back from some parents that maybe wouldn't have contacted us if not. And then I thought after tonight, if you approve this, then we'll send out another notice saying, you know, we're gonna open it up to 33-month-olds, so you're gonna wanna sign up as soon as you can, or give them a deadline that they have to sign up by a certain time, and then we're gonna open the door for 33-month-old kids. Does that seem fair?
Yeah.
So, what happens if you get over 20? You kick people out?
Well, we won't, we won't kick them out, what do you mean?
Well, we can only have 20, so if you have more than 20-
Well, we, we definitely, everything's gonna be accepted as it goes, I mean-
First come, first served.
Because the only thing that might change is if the 33-year-old comes in at January, and maybe by then, we're already full, you know, so. Because can you take more than 20, even if it's that?
We'd have to look into the size of the room, how many children we can, that they have to have so many square foot per child.
So, any other questions?
You said you talked about a bathroom, where did you guys talk about putting that?
Well, if you're familiar with the room, Bev has an office, and then there's a room behind Bev's room, and a little storage room, and so we thought we'd open up a door by the sanctums there, plumbing there, open up that door, and then there'd be room for a bathroom there.
Oh, okay.
So, it would be, it'd be a lot more convenient, and it would be, you gotta make sure that it's the right side and all that stuff, but I think that we overall look like that would be possible.
Okay.
Any other questions?
How soon would you want this changing station? You'd probably want that right away, wouldn't you?
Yeah, we'd probably need to order it right away.
And I think you could probably just talk to Ray about that, probably.
Yeah, so we just need the blessing of, so it wouldn't be more than 1,000, we just wanna look at quality and, you know, if it has rails and all that kind of stuff, and we only have a limited space in Bev's office to put it, so we need to look at something.
Ray has some experience as well with this program, so he may wanna speak a little bit to his past experience with it.
Couple comments, I think it's very good for the community and the families, but also, my job is to be the bottom line, and it generates more people enrolling in the school district and staying there, and by the time they're in high school, it generates over $6,000 a student. I had it in, I think, nine communities in New Mexico, and we have a similar program in Butterfield, so I would very strongly support it and ask the board to approve it.
So, 33 months they would enroll, it's not, we're not, are we technically Head Start or not Head Start?
Head Start basically- I have Head Start kids, and they pay for mine.
So, they would come in, and they can come in at 33 months and do Head Start, and then the, next year, they could, they, but they, no, we won't have, the new ones won't have to follow by-
Right, so my Head Start needs to have-
And then, they could join, they'd be, they'd have to join three-year-old preschool or not till four-year-old preschool?
No, they'd have to join three-year-old, no, they'd have to join three, because they're not eligible at the start of the year, they'd say come the next call.
I just wanna make sure I understood that.
Bev, your salary's paid by a grant, right?
It's paid through, yes, sir.
Would lowering the age, does that affect that at all with the Head Start, what's covered and what's not?
No, because we take three-year-olds down to the, I have a statistic of them, and they're-
Okay.
I would, I'm not having a chance to really look into it, but I just wanted to make sure we're checking the statutes for the school readiness, which we sort of, sort of run that under the state statutes, our H3 to kindergarten. So, I don't know if we need to get a permission from the state to go ahead and allow them in earlier, to run it under-
At 36 months or something. We just, I just look at the certification that we have for our program as 33 months, and so that's what I thought it would supersede the statutes, but I don't-
Yeah, that would be a question that we'd have to make sure you got, we got ironed out, so we don't wanna start a program and then say, oh, never mind, we don't get-
What's the step we have to take to that, to make it really raise the next step, maybe?
We're doing it, so I'm assuming it's gonna be yes, we'll have to check on that the next week.
Yeah.
I would say you'd ask, probably MSBA would probably know the answer to that.
But if we're doing it, I think it's possible to create a rate on it.
Cause you're in other districts, other districts do have kids starting at-
Exactly.
Need any else? And is your third staff person somebody already have on staff, or are those somebody that you need?
Yeah, no, we have a third person that comes in now to help over lunchtime, so, and she's one of the Cardinal Kids staff, so there's a nice overlap over, you know, the kids that will-
Can I make just one little tiny off the record comment? You were talking about the $25,000 bathroom project, within three weeks of the project being completed, the screens of the urinals were taken out of the bathrooms. And it's just a little thing, but it's annoying, because that's what led to the second floor being damaged, because they took the screens out and they started putting things in the urinal. So, those of you who have boys that are going through the spore growth, and I'm sorry, the Cardinal Kids used the other one, I just think it's ridiculous. I don't know why they have to do that. I mean, they think you're replacing them, but, and I've never used a urinal, I don't know why you would do that, but I'm thinking it's not necessary. But anyway, just so you're aware that that stuff happens in this thing. So, anyway. You might have to have a newspaper or a-
You're on camera, though.
Yeah, but I just thought I'd mention this.
That's a heads up, Ray, we're watching you.
I wasn't here.
So, any other questions or comments, thoughts?
Any, any questions for Diane, or any discussion?
So, if, if it sounds like it's something that needs to be-
It needs to be board-approved.
Decided.
Yeah.
Soon. How comfortable are we with the statute issued? And so, I guess my question would be, if we were to approve the purchase of the station with the cost of up to $1,000 per, you know, with the idea that statutorily, it's okay, would that be something that we would have an interest in, or how would we handle this if we don't do it tonight, if we're not comfortable with how the statute is read?
Yeah, I think if the board wanted to move forward and approve it, so you could approve it with the understanding that we check on the statute, pending statute approval, so that we know that we're in the right before we move forward, but-
And Diane, you said as soon as you get approval, you'll send out a paper, right?
But I need, I'm, cause I'll wait until-
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
I guess I would make the motion to approve the purchase of that changing station, up, an amount up to $1,000 pending a check on the state statutes to make sure it's okay.
One second on that, Justin.
We need to approve just allowing them to accept 33 months, right?
Right.
So, we need to frame that-
Okay.
-motion around what we actually need to approve.
Okay.
So, what would be the best way to word that? I'll let Steve-
I think too, you're accepting this proposal upon checking on the statute. I mean, the proposal's pretty well-written, it's pretty clear, so I think you're, I think the board is approving this proposal to move forward pending the checking on the statute.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'll reword it, then I guess, I'll make the motion to approve the proposal pending checking on the statutes to make sure that it's okay.
Okay. Motion by Justin?
Second.
Second by Teresa, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry? Let's see, next we got discussion on posting for silent bid to sell pianos.
Yeah, so we have two old pianos in the district that we would like to put up for silent bid, we have no use for them anymore. I know one of them's not even able to be tuned anymore, so before we decide to do anything else with them, we would just like to go out for silent bid to see if there's any interest, and so just would like to get board approval on that.
She actually did say two, possibly three, working with Nina, sent this email. So, post that, or not, but-
How, how would you actually post them? Would you post them on a, on a-
Post them outside, post them in the newspaper as required.
Okay. Is there any posting statewide or anything, like you would a job?
There's a public surplus, but with the, the one can't be tuned, the others two are over the bat, so.
They probably, they probably don't have a lot of value.
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to post the pianos that are no longer being used up for silent bid.
Motion by Teresa, second by Pat, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry? And I guess with that, I guess looking for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Cassidy.
Second.
Second by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry, meeting adjourned at 7:38.